...me on how to be on this show.
Yep. Well, I'd like to call the Lane County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, March 17th, and I want to jump adjustments to the agenda up to the front, just so we can get that in before we move on to the public hearing on the supplemental budget. And I understand Commissioner Sorensen, did you have an adj-
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say that I know we've been in the past going, you know, powering through as, get as much done as we can through lunch times, and I just wanted to request that we cut off at noon today, because I have to do something between noon and 1:00, and then start up at 1:30.
Great. That shouldn't be an issue today. I think our agenda's light enough, we should be done before noon in the morning session. And I also understand that Commissioner Farr, you'll be absent this afternoon, because you have to go to Salem.
Correct. I have the little reason testimony.
All right. Any other adjustments to the agenda this morning? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to county administration. This is public hearing on resolution order 1503-1701 in the matter of adopting the FY 1415 supplemental budget number two, making, reducing, and transferring appropriations. And is-
We are working, Mr. Chair, to track down Christine Moody-
Okay.
-for this, so if you'd like to-
Move on, okay.
-change the agenda and come back, yeah.
We'll come back to that. Then are there, is there anyone signed up for a public comment this morning? Anyone that wishes to address the board? As we have the usual Marlins crowd in this morning. Hey, commissioners' response to public comments or any other issues or remonstrance? Commissioner Farr?
Since we have a big audience and a little bit of time, just today's Patrick's Day around my house. We're having two Patricks in the house.
Oh.
So, me and my son. But I just wanted to mention, I grew up in England, wondering why I was called Patrick. I was the only person I knew called Patrick in England. It's not a common English name. And it was later that I realized that my grandmother, my dad's mom, Elizabeth Kilkeny, her dad was named Patrick Kilkeny, and his dad was Matthew Kilkeny. And my name is Patrick Matthew Farr, named for a couple of Kilkenys. So, I wear the green, not just for the O, but for the fact that we do have heritage.
Commissioner Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just wanted to take a moment, I think, all of us on the board, and it's probably been well-publicized, the passing of Dave Frommeyer, but I wanted to just take a second to, you know, thank him publicly and his family for the time that he gave to Lane County Service the time that I've been here. He stepped up and co-chaired a public safety chair committee with, oh, come on.
Gene Tate.
Gene Tate, thank you. Spent a considerable amount of time investing in trying to improve our public safety system. And I just, you know, wanted to acknowledge his commitment to making life in Lane County better and improving lives, and thank him and his family, specifically his family, for supporting him and everything that he's done for our community.
Commissioner Lichen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'd like to echo Mr. Stewart's comments. I was actually in Texas at the time when I heard of Dave's passing, and most people don't know this, but actually Dave's father, Otto, and my grandfather did a lot of business together. So, I actually have known the Frommeyers for many years, and I must tell you, I was really, that one hurt, no doubt about it. I have, I've heard from Mark, and, you know, I think what's been amazing is Mark has been, told me, it's just been, well, it's stunning, really, to the family, because I think what happened is, you know, they kept it quiet, but then the, unfortunately, things went pretty quick. And, but I heard from Mark, and he said he's been just, he just wants to thank the community overall, just for the unbelievable accolades to his father, and so I, which I thought was fantastic. And on another note regarding University of Oregon, this is a big congratulations to the University of Oregon Men's Track and Field Team, NCAA indoor champions.
Again.
Again. And for the women's team, they were runner-ups. And so, to Coach Johnson, big congratulations on a great indoor season and bringing home yet another title for the University of Oregon Track and Field. So, big congratulations there. And couldn't be remiss that U of O basketball teams and the Big Dance, for the third year in a row, first time in history, and congratulations to Oregon State Women's Team, number three seed in the West. So, I think, and what I hear, that this week is maybe will go down as one of the most unproductive weeks during the year, so I've heard that the business will lose nearly $2 billion of productivity this week, because of March Madness. So, I was, I heard that on the air. But anyway, big congratulations to our indoor track and field teams for doing so well, and congratulations, Coach Johnson.
Thank you. Commissioner Sorensen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to convey my condolences to the family of Dave Frommeyer on his passing. I talked to Mark Frommeyer about, two weeks ago, and the, the community, I think, outpouring is well-deserved. There's a lot of different facets to Dave's life in the Oregon House of Representatives, as Attorney General, as Dean of Law School, President of the University. I think for the lawyers in Oregon who were lucky enough to take classes from Dave, I think most people that were fortunate enough to know him probably regarded him as one of the best teachers they ever had. The guy was just a phenomenal teacher. And in many times in Dave's career, I would say, you know, really, whatever you can do to get back to teaching would be most appreciated, because he was such a great teacher. And I don't know if many people know this, but when Dave was a law professor, he invited every student he had to Dave and Lynn's house. Every student he ever had was invited to his house. Now, sometimes there were a lot of students there at one time, but that's something that a lot of people may not know, is that he developed a personal relationship with, you know, literally thousands of people. And, and I thought the register guard coverage was good, where one of the lawyers in the law firm that Dave ended up in after he retired said, you know, he was just a very down-home person, and he was just a guy that really did drive a minivan. And I think, given how phenomenal he rose in Oregon public life, I think that's a great characteristic, and I think everybody's pretty sad about this that's connected with the university. There is a community-wide celebration on Saturday, this Saturday, at Matthew Knight Arena. So, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Sorensen, and I too wish to express my condolences to the Frommeyers and their family. Didn't know Dave very well, you know, being from outside the community and all that stuff, but it always amazed me if I ran into him at a charitable event or some other event around the county. From way back when I first started at LCC, he knew my name and greeted me warmly, and was the most friendly person to run into at an event. You know, always made you feel like you were his best friend, meeting him. And it was just an incredibly nice man, and for that, I will always remember him. With that, we'll move on. Is there any emergency business today?
There is none.
And have we-
Mr. Chair, we can go back to item number one, if you're prepared.
Great, we can do that. So, we will move back in the agenda to item 1A, the public hearing at resolution order 1503-1701 in the matter of adopting the FY 1415 supplemental budget number two, making, reducing, and transferring appropriations. And looks like we have Judy instead of Christine, so-
Good morning, Commissioner Bozovic and other commissioners. So, I wanted to present supplemental budget number two, and this is for fiscal year 1415. And as you know, with Oregon Budget Law, we can do several supplementals throughout the year, whenever there's changes in revenue or changes in expenses that we need to report on. So, this is just a routine supplemental budget that I believe, do we want to do the hearing first, before I go into the detail, or should I go to a quick summary?
Generally, we, you know, get a slight presentation from staff, if there are any questions from commissioners, then we'll open the public hearing and close the public hearing after that. So, if you have, if you have anything you want to let us know about it before we open the public hearing, that way, if there is somebody that wants to testify, they can hear that information also.
Okay. Just very briefly, overall, this supplemental does decrease the county's total resources by $1,416,302, and expenses are also decreased by $2,384,000. So, this is typically, there's, you know, grants that come in. We had a O and C timber payment in revenue that came in higher than originally forecasted. And that's, my understanding, just due to the harvest and not estimating an amount that would come in, and it did come in a little bit higher. So, the supplemental reflects that. In addition, in the analysis memo, there's some details, such as grants, in addition of a grant funding from the Office of Emergency Management that came in, and this is reflected in the supplemental, as well as some grants that came in for justice reinvestment. And overall, this does change, there's some FTE that's in addition with the Parks Fund, the Special Revenue Fund, Intergovernmental Health and Human Services Fund, and Trillium Behavioral Health Fund. And with that, I will wrap up the summary, unless there's any other questions.
Any questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone signed up to speak? Does anyone present wish to speak to the supplemental budget? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. So, with that, do we have a motion? Commissioner Stewart?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move approval of order 15-03-17-1 in the matter of adopting the fiscal year 1415 supplemental budget number two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. So, we will jump back down on the calendar, to the consent calendar here on our agenda, and these are routine items, usually passed in a single motion without discussion by the board. If you wish to see each item, you can go to our website and the agenda and click under View Material to see the details for each item. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Moving on to item 7A, order 1503-07-08, in the matter of awarding and accepting contracts, applying for and approving grant applications, and delegating authority to the county administrator to sign the approved contracts, amendments, and grant applications in the Department of Health and Human Services. And we have Alicia Hayes, and I will introduce.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Bozovic and commissioners. I want to introduce Debbie Heasel, who's our senior PSC Program Service Coordinator, who will cover the item.
We are asking for approval of three new contracts.
Down, down.
We're working on it. Better now? There we go. We're asking for approval of three new contracts, three contract amendments, and three grant applications. The new contracts will all provide services with our community health centers, Payless Drug, they provide pharmacy services at Lane County Behavioral Health. Walgreens, they'll be doing mail order, 340B medications for clients who are interested in receiving their medications, mail order. And Peace Health Labs, who will be doing laboratory services for clients of the CHC. The three contract amendments, one is with Nedco for personal finance education, for our energy assistance clients. We've had more clients than we thought we would, and we need to add a little more money to that one. Center for Human Development, they are the public health authority in Union County, and we need to extend their contracts so they can continue to utilize our food handlers' card website. And Pacific Source, we need to extend the billing authority contract so we can continue to bill for services provided at the CHC to visit those clients. We're also asking for approval of three, of two grant applications. This is only approval to submit the applications. If these applications, if these grants are awarded, we will come back to you and ask for approval to accept the grants at that time. So, we've just given you a brief synopsis. One is a non-competition grant with the Oregon Health Authority for tobacco prevention and education. It's non-competitive. We get a certain amount of money each year from the OHA to provide those services, but we need to tell them what we're going to do with that money. And a grant application to Lane County Workforce Partnership for workforce investment funds, and it will allow youth services to serve 25 youth with academic and vocational training.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Farr?
Actually, a little bit of a question, perhaps, more of a call-out. Each time I receive a presentation from your department, Ms. Hayes, I become more and more amazed at the breadth of coverage that folks in Lane County are receiving from Lane County's Health Department. It's really remarkable, the services that we provide. And once again, I, each time I hear a presentation, I find out more about ways that we're finding it, making people find it easier to access healthcare, which has become elsewhere more and more difficult all the time, due to the lack of primary care providers in particular. And so, I think it's, I'd like to call it out every opportunity that I get, Ms. Hayes, that it can be so much more with less, and the fact that we're helping Union County and other counties to provide their healthcare services. It's just a, just a remarkable asset that we have, that the people of Lane County have in their department.
Thank you, Commissioner.
My question is, do you agree?
Absolutely.
And, you know, significantly, I'll also point out again that you have a strategic plan in place, that we approved a little over a year ago. And I love to see the tactics that have been developed surrounding that plan, and the progress that's been made on a regular basis surrounding the Community Health Improvement Plan. And the more we call that out, the more people will hear about it, and the more they'll understand the umbrella of services and the safety net of services that are provided by Lane County's Health Department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lichen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What I'd like to zero in on is the grant application on the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act. And I would like to say, thank you very much for focusing in on that. I think, you know, when we've had the opportunity to have lunch with the kids over at, with part of the MLK, what I've noticed is that these are kids, and I think we also heard when we had the public hearing on the, on the Public Safety Levy, these were kids who were really wanting to get their lives turned around. And I'm looking at this, and I'm thinking, you know, what a, what a great opportunity, because, you know, I have two millennials at home, and I must tell you, it's a little, it's concerning to me that when we have our youth, and we need to be preparing them for what's going to happen coming into the future. And the last thing we need is our kids saying, you know, I just don't see enough opportunity in Oregon, I'm going to leave. And so, I really view this as really a positive. I don't want to say, thank you very much for going beyond the 100,000, because I think it's 115 on this one. And so, you're, you obviously need to come back for that, for that approval. But I really want to zero in on that and say, thank you very much. And if there's any other opportunities on something like this, I would just highly recommend you go after that. And because we really need to be, in my view, making sure that our youth, and the thing is, I think when you catch them, catch our youth at that early, earlier age, that rehabilitation's in place. And this is, this is really providing a guidance for future, for, for youth to really to come back and, I think, provide just great benefits to our community. So, great job on that. And any future opportunities like that, I would, I would be very, very, I would be in your corner all the way. And so, I want to say thank you very much on that piece in particular.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just want to point out that, you might not know this, but John Arons and I started 28 years ago, Summer Youth Employment, putting kids to work as county employees. So, absolutely understand the importance of, the benefit of work as that important piece of just turning your life around, or just continuing a healthy and happy and productive life.
I've had a few conversations, Mr. John, on that very particular area.
Yes.
And so, I think, thanks for that call-out as well. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I just, you know, I'll take a minute just to note the Nedco expansion there. You know, it's great, we supply help with folks' heating bills and all that, but actually teaching them to manage their money so they don't get in trouble again. Having that education piece connected to that is so important, you know. It's, you know, give a, give a man a fish, and you feed him for a day. Teach him to fish, and he feeds himself for a lifetime. And that's kind of that, that connection, I think, is really important to, not just the receiving help, but also the education, so you don't need the help in the future. So, I think it's really, that's an important little piece, too.
With that, is there a motion? Commissioner Stewart?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would like to move approval of order 15-03-07-08 in the matter of awarding and accepting contracts, applying for and approving grant applications, and delegating authority to the county administrator to sign the approved contracts, amendments, and grant applications in the Department of Health and Human Services.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
On a roll. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to county council announcements. I know we do not have need for executive session today. Do you know if there was anything else county councils-
He rattled something off about the Oregon State baseball team, but I stopped listening this morning, so I don't think he has any. Sorry, I had to say that.
Well, if he decides that he needs to tell us something, he can jog on down here, but I think, I think there wasn't any really need for county council this morning, so we'll move on to county administration and announcements.
Thank you.
Mr. Mokr Hyske?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have, can you hear me?
Yes.
I have two, two announcements for you. I wanted to give you an update on the election for May 19th. We've received 153 candidate filings, two measures, Lane County's ballot measure, as well as the City of Westford, I believe it's a charter amendment that they have in Westford. We're working on, of course, the voter's pamphlet that the board approved moving forward with. We've received one complete candidate statement and no arguments so far, although we've received multiple inquiries on that. The deadlines for candidate and measure filings are Thursday, March 19th at 5:00 p.m. Arguments are due by noon on Monday, March 23rd. And our staff, our election staff is working feverishly, as you would imagine, proofing all the ballot pages. Will begin on Monday, March 23rd. We expect to have over 200 ballot styles for this election, and proofing of those ballot pages. And the voter's pamphlet will take, we estimate, up to about five full days for all of our staff. So, our election staff continues to do great work to prepare for that. We'll give you more updates at our next meeting on March 31st. The other update I wanted to provide you is, last week, you heard some public comment from the parents of an individual who was a resident at the Huron Center. And our staff has met, I've had an opportunity to meet with our Health and Human Service staff, and county council, and HACSA to go through and sort of resolve any of the outstanding issues. So, I want to provide the board, and this will take a minute to walk through, but I think it's an important one, since you've heard some comments about it. First, just to set the stage, Lane County Health and Human Services contracted with Shelter Care to run the Huron Center, which is a residential facility for individuals with mental health, acute, high-need mental health services. Funding is provided as a pass-through from the state, mostly specific to the residents in the center. The State Division of Addictions and Mental Health oversees the licensure of the Huron Center and is responsible for the health and safety of the facility and its residents through Oregon administrative rules. Since Lane County holds the contract with Shelter Care, we provide support to the state in its oversight role, but we do not have any independent authority to take action without state approval at the facility. So, we monitor the program through review of incident, incident reports, and technical assistance. We support the state during audits and reviews, and so that really is our role, again, is administering the contract on behalf of the state and assisting in the monitoring at the facility. To provide a little bit of a timeline for you, you know, this information broke on this issue, and there were some articles in the news media over the past few weeks, but we've been aware of concerns at the Huron Center since October of 2014, when the county was notified by a former Shelter Care nurse of concerns over medication oversight and protocols. The county reported that information to the State Division of Addictions and Mental Health, and the state initiated an audit on the Huron Center as a result of the county notifying them of the information that we were provided. On October 14th, the state issued a finding of no compliance to, they conducted, let me first say that they conducted an audit at the Huron Center, and then the state issued a finding of no compliance to Shelter Care, including specific required corrections that needed to be made at the facility. Over the next several months, Lane County staff continued to monitor the facility under the direction of the state. On January 28th, 2015, the state notified us that it would be initiating the process to revoke Shelter Care's license at the Huron Center, as a result of the audit and the compliance issues, the orders for improvements, and the continued monitoring that occurred. So, on January 28th, they initiated the process to revoke the license. Additional site visits were conducted, both by Lane County and the state, between January 28th and February 27th. On February 27th, the state contacted Lane County and notified us that due to recent issues at the facility, it would be issuing an emergency suspension of the license. We worked with the state on placements of the residents at the facility in anticipation of that license being revoked on an emergency basis. On March 2nd, the state notified Shelter Care of the decision began from clients. Shelter Care, so that walks you through then the process up to the date of March 2nd, when the residents were moved. And then I'll give you a couple of comments about the appeal process, as well as address the HACSA lease issue that was raised last week. Shelter Care may appeal the ruling from the state. There is a process that's provided under state law for that. They have not yet done so. So, as of late yesterday, when I talked to our staff about the issue, we don't know if Shelter Care will appeal that decision, but if they do appeal, a hearing would take place on April 22nd. So, there is this lag period of time. The alternative is that Shelter Care does not appeal the finding from the state, then the county may contract with another provider. Lane County is, as you would expect and imagine, is proactively coordinating with the state to ensure that the Huron Center operations are reestablished as soon as possible, but we do need to allow for that appeal process to run its course under state law. I can tell you that in conversations with our staff, we're prepared with a board order. We have had conversations with alternative providers. So, we are ready to move quickly on reestablishing that operation, but again, we need to allow that appeals process to take place. I think, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on that. In regards to the HACSA lease, HACSA owns the facility, has debt service on that facility, and there are lease payments that are made from Lane County through Shelter Care's contract. Now that Shelter Care is no longer providing those services and making those lease payments, the question from HACSA has been, how do we make sure that we continue our debt service payments and we don't get behind on that obligation? I've spoken with Larry Abel, I spoke with Jacob Fox last week, Alicia Hayes and her staff in Health and Human Services have spoken with HACSA staff, and we are coordinating with them, and I can tell you that we're prepared to work in collaboration with HACSA to make sure that they are not adversely affected as a result of their debt service schedule and lease payments as a result of this. So, all I can say upfront is that we're working together, and we'll make sure that the HACSA lease- HACSA lease issue is, is not a concern. Again, our primary concern here, just to reiterate, Lane County's two roles here are to administer the contract that had been with Shelter Care and that potentially could be with another provider at the location, and then to monitor, under the direction of the state, to monitor the operations as needed at that facility. And, and again, our primary concern here is allowing that appeals process to run its course, being prepared to get a new provider located there to get these individuals back into our community as soon as possible and residing in a safe, accountable facility that meets all of their requirements. So with that, I will be happy to take any questions. I may or may not be able to answer them, but I'll do my best.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you for a very comprehensive report, Mr. Mokrheysky. That covered a lot of the questions that I had surrounding the action that's been taken. One of the most poignant parts of the testimony we received last week was from the parents whose child was removed from the facility to Yuma Tilla County, presuming Pendleton. And, and my question was going to be, do we know, you know, they're supposedly kept someplace close in the community, and that's obviously not very far. It's about as far away as you can get and still be in the state of Oregon. But you answered the question in part, that you said that we're trying as quickly as possible to bring the patients back to Lane County. We presume that most of the patients there, and because of, you know, it's a medical facility, and I don't know any of the details about the patients that are there, but would presume that many of them are from Lane County and have families in Lane County who are suffering the heartbreak of the necessity for their child to be in that facility or their relatives to be in that facility. And then to have that compounded with the fact that to see them, even for the brief time that they do get to see them, they have to travel to Pendleton, that's a true heartbreak for a parent or for a brother or sister or, or a child. So as, I was very pleased to hear you say, as part of what you just delivered, that we're working to get the patients back home to Lane County as soon as possible. To me, that's one of the very important elements of providing the service, is making certain that the people who are the first and most immediate support for the people who are in, for the folks who are patients in the facility are able to give whatever level of support they can at all times. So thank you very much for that, once again, very comprehensive report. That's pretty much all of my questions, Steve. Thanks.
Thank you. And we, we share, obviously, that concern about making sure that the residents get as close to their family and caretakers as, as possible. Again, it's my understanding that given that the, the facility that they've been relocated to is the closest, while we have other community-based mental health residential facilities, the individuals that reside, that reside at the Huron Center, as I mentioned, are, have been deemed to be high need, acute mental health needs that cannot be serviced at other residential facilities and/or there may not be other available beds available. And so, again, we share that concern, and we're doing everything we can to get them back in the community as soon as possible.
Thank you, once again. Commissioner Sorenson.
Do we know how many of these patients were taken to different facilities? How many?
I know that there were 16 beds, I believe there were 16 beds at the Huron Center. I am not aware of how many were able to be placed in other local facilities. It was, not all 16 were, were removed out of the community.
So all 16 were removed out of the facility?
Out of the facility, yes.
But not all 16 were removed out of the community?
That's, that's right. And I can get you a specific number of those that were moved to a facility outside of Lane.
What's the timeline to get the patients back?
Again, it largely depends on the appeal process. So Shelter Care hearing is set for April 22nd if Shelter Care appeals. If they don't appeal, then we can move quickly in coordination with the state to bring forward, and we're, we're prepared to do that. The board will need to take action on the contract, but we need to allow for that appeal process to run its course. So it's going to be, it could potentially be, you know, four to six weeks at, at the longest.
Were the parents of the, of the people in there or their guardians, were they informed of this transfer or, or not?
I don't know if the, I know that we worked with the state to notify and gain placement for individuals. I cannot say that every single guardian was notified. I think it's important to know that these are adults, and so there's a consent process that's required there, and there are healthcare privacy rules that have to be followed. So our staff and the state, under state direction, did everything that it needed to do to ensure that it followed the state regulations, as well as ensuring the safety of, of those residents in notifying any individuals that needed to be.
My understanding is that, from the testimony, that, that the residents did not get any notice. In other words, the, the state just showed up one day and took them away so that they didn't provide, and I don't know if it was Shelter Care or the state, but no notice was really provided to those people who had gone through the process of providing contact information for their guardian or contact information for their parents or relatives or whoever was, was designated and had a HIPAA waiver and all of that process so that, just precisely for this reason, so that people, their allies and their advocates could, could advocate for them. Is there any way to find out whether that process exists in other facilities in Lane County that we have contracts on to protect those, not only the advocates, but also the patients themselves? Because that's all, all reason we go through this process of, of informing the patient that we can't provide information to other people unless they sign this form and their privacy is protected by federal law. That's why we go through the process. Then, when the fateful moment happens, when they need the information, they're told, oh, we can't, can't communicate with you because we don't have the proper authorization. How can we kind of get on top of that to make sure that doesn't happen again?
We have, our staff is having conversations about the protocol and understand that these, the mental health residential facilities in our community vary based on the type of need by the individuals. And so the Huron Center services, again, a higher need population, whereas other facilities may serve a, you know, a lower need. So we, but we are having that conversation. So the needs are, I guess my point is that the needs are, the, the process for notification in this case may vary depending on what the state authorization and regulations are. But we are having discussions about the protocols that relates to notification of family and guardians. And again, it's my understanding that we provided notifications where we were able to under the law, but we certainly can provide an update on that issue for you.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Steve, I have a question. I just wanted to make sure that we've had staff that's followed up with the parents that gave testimony to answer some of the questions, if not all of them that they posed. Do you know if that communication's taking place?
I will follow up and make sure that we have reached out. And again, we're, there have been discussions that have occurred between our staff and the individuals who made, who provided testimony last week. You know, again, there's certain information that can be shared and that cannot be shared. And so we are constrained under the law in some respects on what information we can share with individuals. But I know the communication has occurred. I can follow up with that again and ensure that any of the questions that were raised last week, if we have the ability to respond to the parents related to those, that we will.
Yeah, I think just being able to tell them, which I would hope we'd be able to do, because we're doing a, here, an open session, that, you know, we're, our staff is prepared to move as quick as possibly, you know, once the appeal process is, you know, been through, that we can hopefully get that facility up and going and get those folks back here, you know, provided that that's the outcome. So the second piece is, is that I've, I've experienced a similar, well, a situation that's maybe not similar, but somewhat similar. And one of the pieces that we discussed as a possibility is, is that, you know, we have a mental health committee, and it seems to me that there might be some opportunity here for the mental health committee once this is, you know, been brought to conclusion to kind of review the process. Possibly they could make some recommendations. I know that this is the state agency that oversees it, and they're the ones calling the shot, but it might be nice that if there's some recommendations that could be potentially made and they're reasonable to make to the state, that we do that. It seems to me like this may, this may be a process that doesn't happen all the time. I mean, this is probably really rare. But in my thought process, you know, if clear back in October, and they knew that this was a situation, they issued a non-compliance letter back in October and probably knew that at some point that there was gonna, you know, be a revoking of the license, I just question, could there have been a, a different way to approach it? You know, potentially, would they be able to garner the authority to bring a team in and actually run the facility during the process? Because my, my concern is, is that a lot of times the stability of just taking these people out of their familiar settings and, you know, you know, I'm wondering if there could be a different process that'd be thought about and proposed in this instance of being able to, you know, stabilize and continue to maintain some stability in the process instead of, you know, this is the second time in, in a month that I've heard in the cloak of darkness, they were removed from their, you know, facility and, and taken to another one, and these folks are, you know, have some level of mental illness. These were definitely, you know, high, high needs individuals with, you know, you know, some special needs. And I'm just, just wondering if, if we could maybe challenge our, our mental health committee to see if they can make some recommendations on process.
Throw it out there. Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, Steve, you pointed out something, that HIPPA, Health Information Privacy Protection Act is, is indeed a two-edged sword, which, which causes it, causes it to be very difficult to provide information, even sometimes to next of kin regarding, regarding the health needs and health care of a particular individual. And once again, it's a two-edged sword, but it, it airs toward the side of privacy. And I think that most Americans have demonstrated that privacy is of utmost importance. And we're finding ways to work within HIPAA and with other codes, U.S. codes, to make it so that more information is, is able to be provided, particularly surrounding mental health and/or substance abuse issues. Some of the issues that have been dealt with at the NACO level right now and at the federal level perhaps can give some form of relief to information sharing under HIPAA rules and under U.S. code rules. But, but it really is, it does favor privacy, and that really is the direction that we have, we've done as a society, is, is toward privacy rather than giving out more information than is necessary.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the subject? Anything else, Mr. Mokrheysky?
That's it for me.
So moving on from county administration, we have a 10 o'clock time sentence that I'm going to move past for a minute here and come, and move down to commissioners' business and announcements. Any announcements from commissioners? Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so a couple of announcements here. So this week, Thursday, Lydia and I will be, Lydia McKinney and I myself will be presenting to the Springfield City Club on the, regarding the vehicle registration fee. And on Friday, I was in Salem at what's called the Transportation Policy Group meeting. And pretty interesting meeting, a lot of it centered around the potential of a transportation package and where we are. One of the things that I heard is that, as me, you know, the Oregon Transportation Forum made a recommendation on a transportation package to the legislature. Well, news now is that since the passage, passage of the Clean Fuels, Carbon, I can't remember what they call it now.
Bill.
Clean Fuels Bill, that's good enough. So passage of that, there, some of the leadership, the OTF, the Oregon Transportation Forum, has decided to leave and no longer support a package. And even if the legislature were to get the 36th in the House, 18 in the Senate, these folks who are part of this leadership, the OTF, are likely to refer the potential of a gas tax to the voters. And so that, I found that to be somewhat disconcerning. And then it came out that both the President of the Senate, President Courtney and Speaker Kotak are now soliciting help from LOC, AOC, and Oregon Mayor's Association leadership to put pressure on Republican legislators to pass a transportation package, which I thought was an interesting way of, of going about it, I guess. But that's kind of where we are on, on that, so I guess stay, stay tuned. I think right now, things need to settle a little bit. It's pretty heated on, on that piece in, in Salem. And I think it's one of those things, just to stay tuned more than anything else. So, but we have, we're, we have this going on, on the City Club. And then next week, we've got another, we'll be speaking to another group in Springfield, and in fact, two groups in Springfield, one on Thursday and one on Friday regarding the vehicle registration fee as well.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Commissioner Sorenson.
I just wanted to thank Ms. McKinney and report that Ms. McKinney and I went to the Jefferson West Side Neighbors and had a nice exchange over the ballot measure concerning the vehicle registration fee. And they asked a lot of questions. I said that I would provide answers, and then Ms. McKinney would provide clarification of the answers.
I do that, too.
That was a good tag team. And then our county engineer, Bill.
Morgan.
Morgan and I had a, I'm sure it was the first ever presentation by Lane County staff to the Whittaker Community Council. We actually sat through a presentation on car-to-go, which is very interesting. It's a transportation-related topic. So Mr. Morgan and I both benefited from that presentation. And then we did the same thing, more or less, that Ms. McKinney and I did the previous night. So we had a lot of questions and support expressed at the Whittaker Community Council.
Mr. Farr.
Thank you, Commissioner Bozovich. Just wanted to point out that we're, that the challenge to end veterans homelessness continues this year, and a number of elements in the community are banding together to make certain that we have no homeless veterans by November of this year. And I'd like to report that I made a presentation to the Human Services Commission yesterday, talking about the number of veterans that we have homeless and the efforts that are going forward. But I really, the thing that I really wanted to point out, Mr. Mokrheysky, is yesterday we had a new member of the Human Services Commission, Commissioner Bozovich, joined us yesterday. And at the end of the presentation on veterans homelessness, he pointed out something very, very important to the Human Services Commission, and everybody listened very closely as Commissioner Bozovich talked about the other, another important element. He said, after we finish with Operation 365, we should begin Operation 121, I think is what you called it, which is 121 homeless youth in the community, and how important it is to avoid potential further problems for the kids. And he talked about ACEs, he talked about putting kids in, in safe facilities, and he talked about the adverse conditions that youth face following the 15th Night of homelessness on the street. And Commissioner Bozovich stepped into the Human Services Commission yesterday, jumped in with both feet and really did an excellent job of grasping the years and years of history that Steve Manella and the rest of the staff have, and, and bringing it down to, to a level where everybody was able to engage in a conversation about something that really hadn't been talked about a great deal in the Human Services Commission. So thanks for being there, Commissioner Bozovich, and thanks for adding to Operation 365. Was it 121? Is that the? Is that the number you?
It's actually between 100 and 150. I think with the homeless vets in Lane County, it's estimated 300 to 400, so.
Pick a number.
Less than half the number of people we have to house to be effective.
Very serious. And the other thing that you pointed out, that Commissioner Bozovich pointed out, is that for many of these kids, the solution is relatively inexpensive, but very far-reaching if the solution is provided. So, really, I think the veterans homelessness and the youth homelessness is something that really can work together to really address a significant need in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Farr. So, I'll just make note that I've been doing the vehicle registration fee speaking tour myself with Ms. McKinney and we managed to get to Santa Clara Community Organization about two weeks ago. And last night, we were at the Junction City Lions Club. And I don't think it's going to be her because it sounds like you're going to be at the Springfield City Club, but possibly somebody else and myself are presenting to the Florence Chamber of Commerce on Thursday at noon. So, we are out there letting people know about that. And of course, staff is very good. They're presenting facts that's neutral, just so people have background and data. And all the opinion comes from the elected officials, so we're very careful about that out there. But it's been generally pretty well-received once people understand really what we're trying to do and trying to, you know, spend a dollar today to save $10 to $12 five to six years down the road. People kind of get that. You know, it's better to change the oil than to replace the engine. And just to add one little thing to folks' calendars for the weekend, don't forget that this Saturday and Sunday is the annual Daffodil Drive up there at Long Tom Grange outside of Junction City, cinnamon rolls and a whole bit. And they got back some of their parking area and adjacent properties, so they will have full vendors there and the horse cart rides for the kids and all that. And it should be a fun event, benefiting the Long Tom Grange and some other charities. I look forward maybe to seeing some of you folks out there outside of Junction City. Any other announcements?
Actually, if I may just, a slight correction, lest I be misinterpreted, the Human Services Commission and Lane County and cities of Eugene and Springfield have always paid a great deal of attention to homeless youth. I, sorry, I didn't want to point out that, I didn't want to leave you with a misimpression that that's not been happening. It has been, but Commissioner Bozovich brought a vitality that I'd never seen before. So, that was what I wanted to point out, was the contribution that you made, Jay.
Thank you, Commissioner Farr. And, you know, not to ignore your vitality around the homeless veterans issues. And, you know, I spoke to that also yesterday, as, you know, these are the folks that volunteered to serve our country and quite often the reason they're homeless is due to issues from that service. And we really, you know, need to honor those folks and help them with their issues. So, moving on, if there are no further announcements, agenda, I think we have time to do agenda team requests before we move into our 10 o'clock time certain. Are there any agenda team requests or work session requests from the board? Great, well, seeing none. And again, I'll mention one more time, just for everybody, that we know executive session So, we are about six minutes early for our time certain. And I'll just mention, is there any other business from the board? So, we can get that out of the way.
Please.
Commissioner Sorenson.
I just want to say that if we could handle anything else, I guess the only thing else would be the afternoon public hearing and the review of assignments.
Yeah, and we won't be able to move the public hearings, they're time certain for 1:30, so we'll have to wait for those.
We might be able to do the review of assignments.
Unless the afternoon items add to that list, you know, if we choose to continue a hearing or something like that, that'll be part of that review of assignments. I would prefer to wait on that until this afternoon. You guys want to take a quick five-minute break and we will start exactly on time at 10 o'clock? So, I'm going to recess until 10 in our time certain and we will start exactly at 10.
Neither Sid or I were ever able to do that over the last few years.
Then I will call the Lane County Board of Commissioners back into session. And it turned out that our five-minute recess was a little bit longer because we had to resolve some technical issues with our presentations. So, it was serendipitous. Who knows? So, move on to our work session. It's a board discussion regarding scenario planning update. And we have Lydia McKinney, our transportation planning supervisor. I think I gave her the title of manager last night at the Lions Club, but Ms. McKinney.
Thank you very much, Chair, Commissioners. We're here for an update on scenario planning and I have a PowerPoint presentation.
Hang on a second, your mic's not picking you up.
Is this?
Yep.
Okay. So, Chair, Commissioners, we're here for an update on scenario planning. I have a PowerPoint presentation and Kristin Hall, who is our project manager from CH2M, CH2M Hill, is here with me this morning as well. We'll sort of do a tag team with regards to the presentation and some questions that you may have for us afterwards. As with the other presentations, so we've been before you twice and we usually, and I've always tried to schedule the presentations to the board after presentations to Eugene and Springfield, that's heard from the board and the conversations we've had. We see this, our role in this is a little bit less direct because this is an MPO issue. We are involved, but we've played more of a supportive role. And so, you have often wanted to know what's happened at the cities prior to this. Kristin did do a presentation to the city of Eugene and if you have questions for us, we can discuss that afterwards. We did have a meeting scheduled with the city of Springfield yesterday that did not take place. They pulled that from the agenda, so we won't be able to report on Springfield. So, I'll go ahead and just dive into the presentation. Okay, different arrow. So, I'll go through this really rapidly because a lot of this is a, now a third-time repeat for you. But again, scenario planning, what is that? It involves considering different alternative futures that are plausible. And in this region, we are doing this to see if our current policies achieve regional goals, what are alternative strategies or policies that we could implement if they don't or to reach them further, and then what are the outcomes of these policy changes. And again, as we've talked about with you before, the scenario planning is a requirement by the state that we reduce our greenhouse gas by a certain percentage by a certain year, which we have a slide on later. But what we early on started focusing on were the co-benefits of the scenario planning and the GHD reduction. And those benefits focused around economic vitality, public health, social equity. Again, greenhouse gas reduction is up there as a requirement. The flexibility for how jurisdictions implement scenario planning was also something that was very important that we heard from the board and from councils and so the project management team has kept that in consideration throughout the process. So, again, you've seen this before. We have completed steps one and two and we're in the step three where we're in the refining and selective phase of the project. And again, your job will be to do the cooperative selection. It will be Lane County, Eugene, Springfield and Cobritz City Councils. We are required to consider at least one scenario that meets the GHD reduction goal, consider public input and we'll have some information for you on that. Cooperatively select, again, the four agencies, a preferred scenario, and we are required to report back to the legislature during the session 2015. LTD's role, they weren't required to be part of this in terms of cooperatively selecting, but they are, of course, at the table and the Board of Directors is being updated and contributes to this process as well. And we are not required to implement a preferred scenario. So, community involvement is something that we've been working on in the time, since we were last here. We've had some stakeholder workshops and these were not attended by a large number of people. We had people who were really interested in transportation issues who attended those for a large part. So, we wanted to do some things that would reach a broader audience. With the consultant in ALCOB, we developed this Future Builder, an online tool where people can log on and actually create scenarios. So, these lines on the right side of the page are the action items, are sliders, so people can go online and move these levers, as it were, or sliders, to see what the different impacts would be. We also did a telephone survey with Dr. Mannross, we'll talk about that, targeted outreach specifically with regards to equity. So, on the online tool, we did have 108 users who used it and 28 submitted some scenarios. Most of the scenarios they submitted did meet the GHD reduction targets and transit, thank you, Anne Marie, transit and active transportation were most important to users. The survey, again, we used Dr. Mannross to do the survey. We surveyed 503 residents in the MPO. There were quite a few, 219 in unincorporated Lane County. And as you know, with Dr. Mannross, he focuses on likely voters. And so, for this survey, that was also his target audience. The respondents were older, it was politically, he split among the political affiliations and some of those statistics are statistics that we're familiar with in Lane County. So, more than two-thirds of the people that we spoke with rate reducing GHD emissions as a high priority and managing roads, improving active transportation, improving access to transit, these are all important to people. There was mixed support for parking management and again, this is largely an urban issue, so we don't talk about that much in the county, but you know, you can charge prices for parking, you can make parking free, there's all kinds of different ways that you can support parking management. And most people supported using existing funds differently perhaps, but not supporting new funds for greenhouse gas reduction. And this wasn't surprising to us, one of the things that, and again, we've spoken to you about this, that we've been learning and that Metro learned, they've gone through this process prior to us, is that we have some great visions, a lot of the plans that we have in place have these visions that will meet our goals, not just with GHD reduction, but with regards to equity, the economy, public health, et cetera. What we lack is money. So, again, this is a repeat of a previous slide that we've talked about in terms of what the state requirements are. And again, what we're basing our information on is the projected plans for 2035. So, we're looking at the Envision Eugene implementation, Springfield 2030 and also Cobritz plan, and also presuming that there will be an increase in population of 64,000 new people. So, we looked at three scenarios. Scenario A is the reference case scenario, so that shows if we just do nothing and implement the plans that we have in place, what will happen? The scenario B is where we cancel those existing policies, we try to maximize some of the existing policies that we have that don't necessarily go beyond. And then scenario C is where we do push further and explore developing new policies. So, when we look at the, what these scenarios achieve with regards to the GHD reduction, the reference case where we're currently moving, we get very close. So, if we did nothing, we would not meet the state's target for GHD reduction, but we're not that far away. Beneath here, you can see we've got some information with regards to the economy and we've used a simple star system to show there would be, there are some benefits to the economy, but when we look at scenarios B and C, you can see that the benefits increase. And the same is true for public health, that there are benefits by enhancing our existing policies and then further benefits from pushing them and developing or exploring new policies. So, the project management team has developed a preferred scenario and it's a combination of things. So, we looked at some things that we have, our existing policies, that we felt that there wasn't any more to be gained, so I'll have some more slides to talk about this. But the preferred scenario would be using the same policy for roadway optimization, fleets and fuels. We have some assumptions with regards to the state that I'll talk about in a moment. Parking would be the same. And then you can see in a few other areas, we would push further into either the B or the C scenario. So, again, just a review, we're providing information to you about what would happen with certain outcomes if, for example, if we increased transit, reminding and stressing that it is not a regulatory requirement. And again, the flexibility was very important, especially to the city councils, that there be flexibility in terms of how each agency or jurisdiction would be able to implement the preferred scenarios if they chose to do so. So, what we're looking at with regards to the preferred scenario is a balanced approach. The bar chart here shows what our existing investment is and whether we would, what the maximum investment would be. And I'll actually ask Kristin, if you don't mind, to talk a little bit about this slide.
Yeah, so this slide just basically shows that we are looking at the maximum level of investment in education and marketing strategies, an aggressive but more modest investment in active transportation, transit and pricing strategies, and holding the line on existing policies on fleets, fuels, parking management and roads. And the roads piece, I think it's important to note that our existing plans are fairly aggressive in this area. And so, by saying we want to hold the line on existing policies and kind of roadway optimization strategies, is not saying those things are less important, but saying that we, our existing plans push those things as far as we think we can go.
So, again, we'll talk about these in a little bit more detail, but as Kristin just mentioned, the roadway optimization piece, we are going with the existing plans because we already do call for things like ramp meters, roundabouts, link signals, managing access on our large arterial roadways and improving incident response. So, not much additional progress can be made in this area. Again, with fleet and fuels, we're not pushing this because the state has made some assumptions for improvements in the fleet and fuel technology and those are assumptions that we have built into our scenarios. Again, parking is something that we're not pushing, we're looking at existing plans and not, and not trying to make too many changes to parking policies. So, this is something that the board is very familiar with, taxes and fees related to driving. I feel funny being here not talking about the project I usually have been, which is the vehicle registration fee, so again.
What's that again, that one?
I can't remember what it's called, actually. But here, this is showing what our gas revenue is expected to be and it continues to decrease over time. So, this is one of the areas that we're recommending that we push beyond existing plans. Some ways we can do that is to support the state's efforts to implement a vehicle mileage travel fee. I know Commissioner Lichen sits on that task force on the pilot program. Our partners want to support Lane County's efforts to raise the vehicle registration fee. Supporting the private sector in full rollout of pay-as-you-drive insurance and then support increases at the state level and federal level as well with regards to local fuel taxes. Transit, and this is a really important component of this because this is something that we really are pushing and as we all know, transit doesn't come without a cost. So, we would increase the transit at nearly twice the rate of population growth. Strategies for being able to implement something like that would be to support a stable funding source for transit capital investments, support full implementation of the frequent transit network that LTD is working on in their long-term plan and will actually be coming before you within, in the next few months to talk about that network. Encouraging new development on those frequent transit network corridors, improving access to transit by focusing on other ways, you know, transit is one piece, but we have to get to the transit service. The MX project is an example of this where in West Eugene, the MX is being developed, but also there are pedestrian bridges that are being developed to connect to neighborhoods. There are improvements to sidewalks and to those transit stops. And this, just in and of itself, supports increased service frequencies and expanded service hours and improving rider amenities. These all have a big impact on increasing transit. Again, active transportation, this is something that we are recommending a strong push on, increasing biking and walking by three to five times today's rates in all cities. And we recognize that is very, very ambitious. Some strategies for being able to implement this or at least move towards that is Some strategies for being able to implement this, or at least move towards that, is building some of the projects that we currently have in our 20-year plans, dedicating a larger share, or looking for new sources to fund bicycling and walking projects, implementing a bike share program, it's likely that Eugene will be implementing that through Connect Oregon funding. Developing incentives for developers to construct high-quality bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. One example of this in Santa Clara River Road, there's a development going in, and the developer is looking at providing a pedestrian hybrid beacon for crossing from Hyacinth Street across Irving there. And that's something that we have long seen a need for, and that might be the result from this development. Expanding things like Safe Route to School programs and enhancing health in walkable neighborhoods, that quality of life that we all work towards. Education and marketing, again, this is something that we push beyond existing plans, as Kristin mentioned, increasing participation in programs. We do have programs in place that we can continue to invest in, Safe Route to School is one of those. We have other programs like Smart Trips that we can expand, supporting eco-driving practices. Commissioner Thorinson mentioned Car to Go, we can expand car sharing in the region, expand participation in workplace commute reduction programs, expand the Transapass program. And again, as you are probably well aware, that's something we're looking to bring back, that Transapass program in this area, and to support regional and state transportation options plans. And again, I know the board has various work on that at the state level, again, Commissioner Lykan is on the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. So, what would happen if we implemented our preferred scenario? And we'll look at these with regards to those co-benefits and also the GHD reduction targets. So, driving costs would be stable, we would spend roughly the same proportion of our income on driving across all three scenarios. The preferred scenario saves more than $50 million in annual household fuel expenses. There is reduced delay and a reduction in vehicle miles traveled, and again, you can see the current conditions on the transportation outcomes are in the light blue, the reference case scenario, and then the preferred scenario at the bottom there. And there, in the lower right-hand corner, the transportation outcomes, again, current conditions on the top, you can see a slight reduction in the reference case and then a further reduction in the preferred scenario with regards to vehicle miles traveled. And that's, of course, related to those investments in transit and alternative modes. There would be savings in healthcare, and this could be very significant. Increasing access to active transportation has been well documented, and we've talked for a number of years now about those benefits to public health. The savings actually equate to about $250 per year. So, again, if you look at the chart below, the current condition doesn't have really any cost savings that we could capture. The reference case, implementing our current plans, has some benefits, but the preferred scenario saves people about $250 per year. And then, if we look at it regionally, it's into the $30 billion range. Reduction in premature deaths, again, this is something that, as if both people are using more active transportation, there is a direct correlation to public's health, and the reduction in premature deaths, again, the chart below is fairly self-explanatory. Again, these results are largely due to an increase in biking and walking, and again, the graphic below is relatively clear about our current conditions, the reference scenario, and what we could see if we pushed the preferred scenario. Equity, again, was a component that we were very interested in. Households would spend a smaller percentage of their income on driving with the preferred scenario than they do today. We do need to keep an eye on equity, this is something that we'll need to continue to monitor if strategies are implemented. We need to make sure that we look to see if new transit routes and services are serving low-income workers and serving diverse neighborhoods, and make sure that the active transportation infrastructure is distributed equally throughout the region. What happens to greenhouse gas emissions, that's actually what we were required to look at. The reference scenario does reduce the greenhouse gases by 3%. We push the preferred scenario, we have a reduction of 20%. So, the preferred scenario meets the region's target of a 20% reduction over 2005 levels. And again, we don't take into consideration the reductions in improved fleet technology and fuel economy, because those are assumptions that we're making based on the state, saying that this is what we can expect in the future. So, what are the next steps? Again, we'll be coming back to you in a few months to talk about co-adopting the preferred scenario. Adopting is not the right word, we'll be selecting a preferred scenario. Again, some of the details we're working out is how we would tailor individual choices for different jurisdictions. Again, I think the county has played and has brought to the table a support role, a lot of these actions wouldn't be things that we would implement in our plans or policies because they are focused in the urban area, but we can support the local agencies in those efforts.
Commissioner Lykan has a question, real quick.
Okay.
Well, go ahead and finish.
Well, actually, it looks like that is the end of the show, so perfect.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, a couple of questions. Can you kind of give me an idea, I guess you said, where's Springfield on this? They're not, I heard at the very beginning, they're not quite ready to provide information, or what, maybe explain that one more time.
Well, my understanding, and Kristin may know more, is that we were scheduled to do a presentation, the same presentation, to Springfield last night, and Springfield asked us to pull that from the agenda. Do you know what, if there were further discussions?
Okay.
We don't have any information.
Okay, so maybe they weren't quite ready to receive it. The other question I have, because Coburg is part of the MPO as well.
That's right.
So, how does Coburg play into this? And are they part of this entire scenario planning as well?
Yes. So, Coburg is, as Commissioner Lykan says, part of the MPO, and so Coburg is one of the jurisdictions that will be required to co-select. Coburg has been participating, Petra is at the table at the project management team meetings, and she has done updates, and she'll actually also be going to her city council with this presentation this week.
And I bring this up, and especially with Springfield, because as we've gone through this process, I've stated all along, I believe this is a much larger benefit to the cities of Eugene and Springfield. I mean, this is where the, if, and at this point in time, basically, the scenario planning is, we provided a report, and that's it. And I think that was one of the Transportation Policy Group meetings I was at a couple months ago, they confirmed that, ODOT confirmed that, just said, we would provide a report. Well, for the Metro, on the other hand, is going to continue to add teeth in it. Which, by the way, I find it interesting, they're kind of updating as they go along. I mean, this is, you know, they had the one in place and, you know, where they thought they were going to go. And in fact, talking to Craig Dirksen a little bit, even some of the narrative, they've changed a little bit. They're not using the terminology of climate change, because they've come to a conclusion that actually has some, a little bit of a negative connotation to it, and so they're using other words, narratives, but trying to achieve the same thing. The other thing is, maybe if you could, because you talked about public health, and we are the, we are the public health authority, so maybe explain how, or maybe talk about how Lane County, with the public health, maybe can enter into this. And also, the last question I had is, is Goshen part of the MPO as well?
Well, I'll answer the second question first. Yes, Goshen is within the MPO.
They're part of the MPO. So, this, so the scenario planning that could be put in place could be maybe part of, maybe what the future may hold for Goshen if the laws change and they're, were required, because again, at this point in time, that we're not required, but instead provide that report. So, that may play into the future as well. So, I guess the last piece is maybe how public health plays into this, because I know even at the Act Committee meetings, we've talked about this at the Bike-Ped Advisory or the Bike-Ped Planning Committee, on how public health is going to play a role in transportation as a whole moving forward. And maybe if there's anything you can add to that, and how we as Lane County Public Health can engage in this.
Sure, thanks, Commissioner Lykan. And as you mentioned, we have some, have made some connections between public health and transportation at the Lane Act. We now have, we're the only act in the state that has a public health official sitting at the table, Jennifer Jordan sits there. Public health has been involved in this, they've been involved in a lot of the subcommittee work, especially with regards to social equity. So, they have been at the table, we are continuing to look for ways to partner with them, because again, we can see that the benefits in transportation, pushing active transportation, really have a direct correlation to what happens in public health. I noticed Kristin is making some notes, do you want to make some other comments on that? No. So, it's really about being able to push those types of things further. For instance, an example is, there's a, public health is looking at developing a grant for some health impact assessments, and when someone mentioned that to me, Lindsey and I thought that would be a great thing for transportation planning, to be able to support, write the findings with regards to the benefits. So, those are the types of things that we're trying to do to be able to make progress in some of those active transportation elements.
Very good, thank you very much. And one last thing, Mr. Chair, I just received a note, and not to be a downer here, but actually, we can almost celebrate her leadership over the years, but one of the great mayors in the state, and one of the great transportation advocates, Mayor Shirley Calcovan, passed away yesterday, 87 years old, and so, I believe the service for her, just read, will be on the 22nd in Telemark. And so, I got to tell you, I loved that woman, she was an incredible leader, and for kind of the grandma, and of a small town, and she was like the old EF Hutton commercials, it didn't matter who you were, if she spoke on transportation, your head turned and listened. And so, just a great memory of her, I just wanted to pass that along. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Farr, and then I'm going to put myself in, too.
Thank you, and thank you for mentioning that, Commissioner Lykan. And, you know, it's coincidental, another former great mayor who passed away a few years ago, Ruth Bascom, I was just talking about her this morning and her tremendous involvement in making sure that everyone leads a healthy lifestyle by access to greater bike trails, and not just in Eugene, but in all of Lane County. And when we named the bridge, the Peter De Fazio Bridge, when I was on the Eugene City Council, I balked at that for a moment. And the reason I balked at it was because I thought it should have been named the Ruth Bascom Bridge. And I changed my mind, you know, it was unanimous vote to call it the Peter De Fazio Bridge because of the great work that Congressman De Fazio put into that. But subsequently, Mayor Bascom got an even greater accolade by the entire bike path system being named after her, which I thought that was a fitting response. The only thing I wanted to mention, Mr. Mokrheyski, is that you and I and all of us have talked about strategy, strategic planning, and all of the elements that are going into the scenario planning really fit into our strategic plan for Lane County that we have adopted. And if, for those of you, for anyone watching at home, if they go to the, this agenda item on today's agenda, click View Items here, they'll get the entire presentation that you just gave to us, and it'll go into some detail about, specifically about our, how it affects our health, the health of the community and our health strategic plan, but specifically, our strategic plan in Lane County is based on three priorities, a safe and healthy community, and, sorry, my timer, my time's up, sorry. No, a safe and healthy community, vibrant communities, and infrastructure. This, you know, the scenario planning really does wrap all of that into our Lane County strategic plan, and we're moving in the right direction. There are elements along the way that people are going to object to and balk about, and the other thing to bear in mind is that the city of Eugene and the state, in fact, just passed laws regarding carbon emissions and global warming initiatives, and those will all wrap into the future of our scenario planning, I'm certain, as, you know, as we meet the goals that are stated by the state, that have been outlined by the state. So, I think, for years, I had asked to be on the MPC, and my requests were denied for years to be on the MPC, but as a county commissioner, the board has appointed me to be a member of the MPC. And so, I get to hear the scenario planning update on a regular basis, and the more I hear about it, I think I fit in with a lot of people in the community, the more I hear about it, the more I understand how important it is, but also how it wraps into every single other thing that we want to do as a community, be a healthier place, be a vibrant place, and take care of the infrastructure that we have a $6 billion investment in.
Right.
Thank you very much for the presentation, Miss Ol, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Farr. So, I'm going to probably be the Debbie Downer in the group here, and remind people what House Bill 2001 really did. Because I've heard the word "required" used in the presentation several times, there's only one requirement in House Bill 2001, and that's that we submit a report, the MPC will submit a report to the legislature this session. That report could be, we failed to come to an agreement on a scenario. That report could be, take a flying leap, because there's nothing in the bill that says if we don't submit anything to them, you know, that there's any penalty to it. You know, and this has been a giant exercise generated by a couple legislatures that stuck in the tail end of a bill, requirement that this MPO go through this exercise, when it was really the Portland MPO that asked to have something put in this bill that required them to go through this exercise, and somehow or another central plane got tossed in at the last second, and the only real requirement is that we report to the legislature this session. And I want to make sure that everybody out there understands that, that that's really what this is all about, is we got tagged into a bill last second to do an exercise, which is of questionable benefit in my consideration, because I still kind of wonder how this benefits our economy and some of the benefits shown. I'd love to see the economics behind all that and make sure they're not missing things like, you know, how else money can be used in the economy, or, you know, other places. But it's just, I just want to make clear that for me, if all we did was report back to the legislature that the three entities could not come to an agreement, or four entities, I should say, come to an agreement on a scenario, and basically told them to take a flying, I'd be more than happy. Because I think this whole exercise, and I'm kind of questioning whether ODOT has completely funded this and how much the local agencies are having to subsidize this effort, and we got stuck with an unfunded mandate around that. So, I just want to express my somewhat displeasure in having to do this whole exercise in the first place. And then, just, you know, there's some things that I kind of wonder whether they were looked at or not, and apparently, I didn't hear about it, but in the scenarios, was there any thought of changing some of the TSPs to avoid out-of-direction travel? And placing back in some projects that would have avoided, that got removed from the local transportation system plans, that would have avoided out-of-direction travel, that would have avoided mixing local traffic with through traffic? You know, I'm thinking the Valley River Bridge, that would have connected River Road with the Valley River community, that now everyone uses the Belt Line Bridge and has several miles out-of-direction travel because of that. I'm thinking the West Eugene Parkway, that would have separated through traffic from local traffic on West 11. You know, there are just so many things that weren't really even considered in this scenario planning, you know, and even just, you know, I will say one thing, I do like that education was being pushed heavily, because I believe that's really the answer. Educate people the benefits of changing their behaviors and then let them decide on their own. Don't try and manipulate a system to dictate behaviors to people. And that's what I see the scenario planning trying to launch us towards, is we are going to manipulate our system, manipulate how many parking spaces are available, manipulate this, manipulate that, and try and force people into decisions that we want to make, rather than educating them as to the benefits of making those decisions, like active transportation, and letting them decide on their own. So, I'm really pleased that education was the one thing you guys maxed out in this scenario, and I'll leave it at that. Commissioner Thorinson.
Thank you very much. I wanted to go back to one of those slides, it was pretty early on, and I think that you had the benefits of different levels of investment, and you mentioned, right there, right there. You mentioned that with Scenario A, you got two filled-out, blue filled out blue stars for economy. And in Scenario C, you got all four blue stars. And I wanted to zero in on that line, economy. I got to take economics in college. I learned that economics is more than money. I personally learned that. So what do you mean by two blue stars on economy? And what's so great about four blue stars?
Yeah. So I also got to take economics in college, but certainly wasn't...
But you paid attention.
Certainly wasn't my major. But what I can tell you about that is, we were thinking about things like the cost to drive, recognizing that that has a multiplier effect in the local economy for spending less money on filling up our gas tanks, we can spend more money on other things. We were looking at delay for freight vehicles, recognizing that for people who deliver goods in this region, time is money. Looking at delay for passenger cars. And what, you know, that two stars, three stars, four stars rating system is vague on purpose. But what we're trying to show is that as we make greater investments in the system, and we see the cost to drive for households to decrease, as we see delay on our system for both passenger cars and freight decrease, that has some benefits overall.
So is, does A cost less than C? But C costs more, but you get better economic benefits? Is that the Cliff Notes version of this class?
C would certainly cost more to implement. So the government cost would be higher. But the cost for individual consumers in terms of how much money they need to spend getting around the region would be lower.
Ah ha. When considering both public and private investment, which is the best option, A or C?
Well, that is a complicated cost benefit question that I don't think I can answer in detail. But just recognize that one of the reasons you get benefit from Scenario C is you're making a larger public investment. And so as you invest more in your system, you get more public health benefits. You have more bike lanes out there. You have more education and marketing programs to help people know that they can walk a bike and take transit. You also have more, you built out more of your system. So you have fewer people choosing to drive to work. So there's more room on our system for freight. But it does cost more from a public standpoint. I think the biggest lesson from scenario planning is that we can do a lot. We see a lot of benefit from that and things we care about. But there is a huge cost to doing that and not a cost that we're readily able to absorb in this region. We don't have a bucket of money for infrastructure or education and marketing sitting around that's not being tapped right now.
With regard to these same star systems for public health, I notice also the public health benefits appear to be greater with Scenario C. But there wasn't any agreement on which scenario we should be doing? Or was there agreement?
Well, again, I think what we're coming forward with is a recommendation for the preferred scenario, which is taking some elements from each. So again, as Commissioner Chair Bozovich noted, we're pushing to the max our investment in education. But we're not making changes in terms of the roadway optimization. So that's really what we're recommending as a project management team. It isn't Scenario C. It's really a combination elements from each scenario. So again, we looked closely at what the benefits were. Are we, can we gain anything in roadway optimization? No, our existing policies are in place. What happens if we make a lot of investment in infrastructure and transit? We get really strong public health benefits. Those relate, those translate to dollars. And so again, that's something that we push. So it isn't Scenario C. It was a combination of those.
Regarding the requirements for this, I was under the impression that the federal transportation law required metropolitan areas to be designated as metropolitan planning areas for purposes of transportation, where federal transportation dollars are being expended. And we have one of those in the Eugene Springfield area because of the population of the Eugene Springfield area. But I've also heard reference to a state law that requires us to do this planning. So what is the federal involvement in any of this?
So there really is no federal involvement in scenario planning. As you mentioned, there is a federal requirement to develop MPOs if you're a certain size, and we are, and we have done that for decades now. But the requirement to do scenario planning, as Commissioner Chair Bozovich noted, is a state requirement. It was implemented through House Bill 2001. So it is the state saying that we have to do these things. The state did fully fund the work that we're doing, a bill for all of the time, to the state for the time that I spend doing these meetings, project management team meetings in any way.
If the Board of Commissioners approves a scenario I will call B-C, what is the consequence of that decision that we've approved a scenario planning approach? What actually happens? Does that change the spending of the federal government or the state government or the city of Eugene or Layne County?
Nothing automatically happens because we're not required to do anything. It really is up to us. So we have this information. We've invested at least two years of time to look at this work. If we choose, we have the ability to pick any of these things and implement them, work with our local partners. But there's no requirement to do so. So again, the requirement from the state is that we do this work. We've done the work, that we provide a report to the legislature. We do intend to do that. We will come back to you and to the councils. And we'll be asking for a letter of support essentially at the end of this process for the work that we've done and the preferred scenario.
And what about the specifics of building a bridge across the Willamette River to connect Valley River Center with River Road, the proposed Valley River Bridge, or building the West Eugene Parkway? These are projects that I think are off the table for many purposes. But people out in the community will talk about the West Eugene Parkway or the Valley River Bridge. Are those projects part of the scenario that I described as B-C?
I'd be happy to just briefly address that by saying that this is a policy level planning effort. And so it doesn't look at project lists or specific projects or project actions. And we didn't actually use the transportation demand model where you'd actually look at particular project lists as part of this effort. We've looked instead using a strategic planning model that ODOT's developed. And so questions like ones you're asking probably would best be asked during the regional transportation and planning process, which is ongoing.
Okay. And what about for the MPO, the federal process of balancing an area, a metropolitan area's ability to fund projects against a balanced list of projects?
I just wanted to note with regards to the question about specific projects, just to remind us all that we made assumptions that In Vision Eugene was implemented, Springfield 2030. So those particular projects that you mentioned weren't part of those.
They're off the table. Because they weren't part of these assumptions.
Correct.
All right.
And there was, again, there isn't any requirement, there isn't really any connection with what we choose to do, if we choose to do anything with scenario planning and the...
Is the education and marketing of transportation, is that the low hanging fruit here where the money that we invest in that on the short to midterm will get some results? What do you want to tell me or our constituents out there? What do you want to tell us that we don't already know? Or what do you want to remind us of what we already know?
I wouldn't presume to tell you anything you don't already know. But one of the things, so with the education and marketing with programs like Safe Routes, with programs like Smart Trips, what we're really targeting are young people. It's that if you can teach kids how to safely ride a bike, how to really understand how to properly drive, start in an early age, teach kids how to use transit, that's why the Transit Pass program was seen as something to be so valuable and that we're really trying to get back in this region.
Is that still going on, that youth can use the laws?
That was eliminated with Betsy. But, so we're looking to re-up that program in the current session. But that, and if Kristin has anything to add to that, I'll let her do that. But really, that's what I think we're doing, is we're really trying to reach out to people, to educate them at an early age so they understand these options. That's where you really see the benefits.
And we really learned during this process that education and marketing programs are fairly inexpensive because you're not building a new facility. But they help to make everything else we do more effective. So if you have a bike lane out there, as Commissioner Bozovich mentioned, you, it's only as good as people using it, right? So it's the way we try to educate people about the choices that are available to them.
Well, aren't we about 6% now in terms of bike commuting? Is that a metro number or a Eugene number?
It's a Eugene number.
What's a metro number for bike commuting?
I don't think we have that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Stewart?
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and myself. And thank you for the presentation. A couple of things just kind of come to mind. I think a quarter of the population that I represent in my district probably is within the MPO boundary. I guess I'm curious as to, sort of in any consideration to the impacts of these decision-making processes to rural residents. And, you know, I think there's probably some changes in thought process or your, you know, personal changes in how you function in your life that can be accommodated within the metro area. But I'm questioning, you know, if you're going to increase parking costs or increase fuel and all these others, when essentially, if, you know, what are some of the unintended consequences, I guess is where I'm getting at, that we see in other areas? So one of the unintended consequences, I believe, with, that we've seen, I think is pretty well documented, that with some of the land use laws and direction that we've adopted in some of our metro areas now having an impact on growth and people moving outside of the areas because that's the only opportunity to purchase homes and things that they want to. So I can see that the same kind of an impact here. You know, I've seen an increase in your wages. You've been commuting from Cottage Grove to Eugene now for 20 years. And suddenly, you're going to see an increase in the cost to do that. And are we going to force people out of that decision-making process? And I guess, have we looked at those type of consequences and what this planning might do in that scenario?
I would say that where those consequences really were best evaluated was in the social equity piece. So again, by law, we were required to look at the MPO boundary. So we didn't bring in agency representatives from the rural jurisdictions, for instance. But that was definitely, and what you're talking about, the drive until you qualify, was part of the conversation that we were having at the project management team level, not specifically talking about rural residents, because again, that wasn't our charge, but recognizing that those impacts, those types of things that you're talking about, increasing parking costs, in land use. And again, this wasn't something that we were looking at, the land use assumptions were In Vision Eugene is implemented and Springfield 2030 is. So I think, I think that's really the place where we really looked at that. Again, is in the social equity. What are the impacts to people who might not have the financial means to be able to absorb those additional costs? Again, I want to be clear that there's nothing that we're doing here. There's nothing that you would do if you choose to write this letter of support when we come back that puts anything into place. So there's no policy decisions. There's no, you know, parking, we're not going to increase parking prices. And if any of those things happen, there will be additional involvement. And certainly, we would want to make sure that we look at those types of things if we were going to implement those policies. We don't have control over what Eugene or Springfield does with their parking policies. But if there were larger, you know, cross jurisdictional efforts that were being made, that would be something we would be at the table for.
Okay. Well, I'm just kind of setting aside that all we have to do is essentially send a letter that this is the scenario that we chose and the impacts. But I guess my question is, is that if we're going to do something, wouldn't it be nice to know what the entire impacts are going to be? I mean, yeah, we're going to highlight all the great things that can happen for the metro area. But what if there's some unintended consequences in the, you know, the other third of the population that's outside the metro area in Layne County? And what are we going to do to our communities, Cottage Grove, Crestwell, Florence, and all these other communities? They're going to be negatively impacted by this. And, you know, can we quantify? Maybe there's no negative impacts. But I think it's worth understanding what some of the potential is. Then if I kind of throw myself as a parent into this, and we talk about how this is really geared at younger individuals, you know, as a parent, it's getting more and more difficult to offer the opportunity for us to hand our kids car keys and let them do their things. Number one, the cost is almost prohibitive. You know, you suddenly give your child a car, and the next thing you know, your insurance goes up $120 a month for car insurance, not to mention the fuel and all those other things. So I think just basically, economics is probably taking some of that opportunity away from our youth. The second is, is that I've noticed, you know, a completely different change in what our youth wants to do. So right now, I'm seeing in my respective areas, kids that are more interested in playing video games and, you know, not necessarily running to the movie theater. They're connecting with their friends, you know, via the internet and doing their certain type of things. So I've actually seen a reduction in probably the impact of how our youth interact. And then the second thing is, is that, you know, if we can get our kids connected into sports and the sporting programs, what we're doing here is, in some aspects, making it even that much harder to get our kids active and involved in sport. So if you have your kids involved in a youth baseball team or football team or whatever, you're generally traveling. So are we wanting to, you know, the benefits of having our kids physically active and doing certain things, is there a potential that this is going to be a negative impact on that activity? Because suddenly now, it's costing more to, you know, additional costs to get the individuals there and associated with some of these policy pieces. So...
Well, and again, I don't think that I can say that we went into and we haven't evaluated negative impacts, certainly when we look outside to the rural areas. And that's something if the board wants to direct us to do, we can take a look at. And that would be something I think we would do at the county level. Again, these were things that were, we had these really robust discussions at the project management team meeting, when we're talking about things like increasing biking by three to five times. I mean, again, that's a huge lift. And what that really means is in some of the things that you're pointing out, Commissioner Stewart, in terms of, it's not just about putting some policies in place. What we really recognize is that to really have these kinds of outcomes, we need to have our communities designed in different ways. I mean, there have to be this idea of 20-minute neighborhoods, which is something that again, has been talked about in Eugene and as an L-POG model, that everything, that you can live, work, and play within a 20-minute neighborhood. There really aren't very many places, even in our, you know, metroist of metro areas, that you can do that. Things tend to require travel. So again, you're talking about some of the things that at a high level, we were grappling with. What are these impacts? How realistic are these things? Again, to say that we're going to increase active transportation by that level really starts to assume that our communities are designed differently. And again, you can look at some of the policies in terms of supporting residential and commercial on our frequent transit network is one way to grapple with that. Because with transit, you can start making those connections. But what you're bringing up is a really good point and something that, as the county representative on the project management team, you know, I grappled with and tried to bring to the table. But issues are different in rural areas. We have different opportunities and different challenges. And, you know, just commuting from Cottage Grove to Eugene, that's not something that realistically, other than Chair Bozovich perhaps, that people are going to be doing on a bicycle. So necessarily, I think that's one of the reasons that we really did focus in on the MPO in the urban areas.
Okay. Well, I appreciate just being able to throw that out there because I've learned recently that it's incredibly important to try to think of the entire big picture. And, you know, Commissioner Bozovich and I got to go speak to a group of individuals that, you know, potentially negatively impacted by a decision that this board made in regards to tobacco licensing and really was... And really wasn't our intent to run those folks out of business and put 47 operating businesses eventually out of business because of a decision that we made. And so I just want to be thoughtful as to what can be some of the negative impacts in this process. And I think we should be aware of it. And if we're going to make a report to the legislature, I think that, and we know that this is going to negatively impact the rural lifestyle and essentially the social fabric that we experience today in our lifestyles, we need to probably let them know that there's consequences for these decisions. And we just can't focus on essentially the 200,000 people that live within a, you know, 10-mile radius. That, you know, we are a county as a whole, and I think that that should be incorporated in. I'm just making some potential. I don't have any scientific data or facts to back my comments, and I could be totally wrong, but I'd like to know that.
I really appreciate those comments, Commissioner Stewart. And I will, and Kristen will too, being here with me. We will bring that up at the project management team and hopefully at least be able to have some conversation about that. Because I would like to, I think you're right, if we can include in our report to the legislature, again, one of our aha moments, which wasn't so aha, was, you know, all of these things are going to take a lot of money, a lot of money, more money than we have that we can generate locally. But I think being able to look at the impacts of the work that we do within our MPO, well-intentioned as it might be, we have to consider all of Lane County. So again, I will bring that back to the project management team and plan to report back to you when we return in a few months. Thank you.
May I ask one question specific?
Sure.
So I just had a specific question on page two of this document, the report. And so I'm looking at the changes compared to today and the different scenarios. So we see a reduction, an additional reduction in air pollution. I can kind of understand that probably with fuel and vehicles and different things. But then I see this congestion hours of congestion. So we're going to see a 37% increase under the, I guess, the existing reference scenario. And then we're going to see a zero increase. I'm just, am I understanding that information correctly?
So that, what that graph is trying to show you is that if you implement today's policies, we're going to see an increase in congestion as population grows. And with our preferred scenario, as we encourage people to take other modes of transport besides the single Ocumen Auto, auto, I don't know where this is coming from today. But we are not going to see an increase in congestion overall if we implement our existing plans plus these other strategies. And so what you're seeing is a shift in the way people get around. We also know that vehicle miles traveled, or we think that vehicle miles traveled on a per capita basis would actually decrease with the preferred scenario as compared to the reference scenario. So those are two different ways of looking at 2035.
Okay. Well, just a comment, I don't know if that's going to be realistic because until we actually change people's thought process. So it'd be like me saying, okay, Fay, I'm going to ask you to do these certain things. I want you to take LTD. I want you to essentially take and increase your time commuting from place to place by doubling it. Therefore, you're going to be less productive so that I need to make a conscious choice of what am I not going to do in my day because I've made that choice that I'm going to increase transportation? And I don't see how you're going to increase my time to get from place A to point B by making a different, you know, choice in transit. So do I choose to get on LTD in Cottage Grove hypothetically and use that transit system that takes me an extra 15 minutes one direction to get to Eugene? What am I going to take out of my schedule for 30 minutes out of the day? Those are the things I'm going to have to wrestle with. And I don't know that we're going to see that 0% congestion is my concern increase.
Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So at the start of this, I talked about the benefits to Eugene and Springfield. I want to say thank you to Commissioner Bozovic. I'm going to add my voice to that. I think what he brought forth is a very, very good point. And I think when, maybe when a state law is written like this, I don't think that they're thinking a lot about this. Portland Metro is, our MPO is not Portland Metro. And that is so much more dense in that area. In fact, Moana County, for the most part, is really a more dense county. It's a fairly, it's a good-sized county, but for the most part, it's the population density is there, where our county, this is the metro area with a county roughly the size of Connecticut. So I mean, so I just want to lend my voice to say, I think that's a really good point. And maybe this is where Lane County then can, when you're looking at the different scenarios, can add this, I think, participate with our partners to make sure that this piece is heard. I think that's key. The other is, I think it's interesting to see the dynamics. When we first started out on the scenario planning, the conversations constantly were how high were oil prices and gas prices going to rise? So I just checked today, so oil is running about $42 a barrel. And the problem is, now they're talking about a glut. And we have too much oil on hand here in the United States and how to get rid of it. And I personally have a little bit of investment side on North Dakota, and so I understand what's going on there. And that, in a sense, we are, we're kind of at a glut. Now, what this is not going to do is necessarily reduce the driving because the CAFE standards have been risen so high and are going to continue to be higher. I was talking to Senator Byer about that. It's not necessarily that driving is going to be less, so all of a sudden you have the VMT issues, so the driving is not going to be necessarily less. But because of the efficiency of the vehicles, you're not going to capture the quote-unquote "gas tax," coming back to invest in transportation, reason why the Rough Top was set forth and put together. And again, I want to emphasize, that's a 10-state coalition. That's just not the state of Oregon by itself. That's 10 states, including the state of Texas, by the way, is part of that coalition. Now, I bring Texas up because I just got back from a trip from San Antonio. And if anybody's not been there, I would highly recommend, because what you will see in a sense is scenario planning probably at its best and along what they call the River Walk. And it is stunning to see what has developed down there. Sure, you have infrastructure set up for vehicles, but they have a terrific transit system in place. But it's the bike pad, it's the pad in particular that has really been, I just call it remarkable. Now, that took vision, it took investment, but they were willing to move forward on it. Today, it's a major tourist attraction. I didn't realize it because you don't think about it, but San Antonio is the 10th largest city in the United States. I mean, how many would think that? But yet, there it is. And so they kind of, but it took something. And it was really interesting, the Public Works Director, who kind of envisioned this in the very beginning and worked with the policymakers, when he retired, he went into the private sector, had his own firm in his offices right on the River Walk. And basically, it was kind of the old neener, 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 I told you so. And that's why he put his office there, to make sure people understood, I told you so, I told you this would work. And so I found out to be very fascinating just to kind of see that, how that all works. And so when I serve on the Rough Top, but also on the Bike Pad, I think the idea here is just to make sure we provide choices and choices for folks. I just saw an article that Portland now has, is now the top 10 city for age group, I think of, the millennial age group, basically, to want to live in. And they're more interested in living in urban flats than they are in buying houses. And so that's, while, that's a trend that's happening in Portland. Unfortunately, I don't see that trend happening here yet. In fact, if anything, I think our school districts, I think, as you see, are, the enrollment is decreasing. We're struggling to provide these opportunities here for our youth and for the millennials in particular and for the future, which is something I think we need to think about. So when we look at the scenario planning itself, and Commissioner Bozovic is correct, and we've mentioned this before on several, this is basically putting a report together and sending it to ODOT, and we're kind of finished here. But as we look at and realize that funding of transportation is going to be a tough issue, we're hearing the conversation in Salem, but even back in Washington DC, when I was back at the NAICO conference, you know, when I were meeting with Congressman DeFazio and the continuing resolution comes up when funding transportation, I got to tell you, that's very disheartening. And there's not even a talk at this point. I mean, they want to have a conversation about reauthorization of MAP 21 or reauthorization of a package, but unfortunately, the reality is, it's going to be a continuous resolution. So what is, where the benefit's there? Probably very little. And so while we can plan, we can look at potential scenarios, the reality is, the public investment is going to be probably out into the future a few years before we ever see reality. And if it's something we want to move forward on the eventual report, and if there's something that the report stays, we've found a scenario that we'd like to invest in. But I just really want to say thank you to Commissioner Stewart, because I, to be honest with you, I haven't really thought about what potentially are the adverse effects of developing a scenario planning piece within the metro area and which could cause adversity to our smaller communities and rural residents in Lane County. So I think that's really an important piece where we as Lane County and Lane County staff can have that conversation with the management team and talk about, hey, what does this all mean for all of Lane County? So Commissioner Stewart, thank you for those comments. I thought those were very, very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lichen. So I'm going to jump in the queue here again. And I just want to first thank Pete for kind of bringing forward the whole issue of opportunity cost, which was what I was trying to say a little bit. And that, you know, he got you to point out that on those things where you had the economy with two, three, and four blue stars filled in, that actually there was a government cost that increased with each one of those stars. And one of the things I don't think is accounted for in saying that some of these scenarios have economic benefit is the opportunity cost issue. One of the things about expanding transit, which is one of the major tools you're looking at trying to do, is get people to utilize mass transit, is it is currently funded by business tax. In fact, it's specific as a payroll tax. And you know, if you want to decrease something, you tax it. It's why cigarette taxes are so punitive, we're trying to decrease the use of cigarettes. So we have a payroll tax that if we increase transit, will naturally increase. And I don't see the studies that look at what's the detriment to the businesses that are going to be spending money on an increased payroll tax versus the employees they might have hired with that money. You know, that balance of opportunity cost, I don't, you know, I don't have the economic study behind whoever came up with their economic benefits. But my guess is, they didn't go into that kind of detail. And therefore, it's very difficult for me to pass on with a letter of approval a scenario that claims there's economic benefits when I'm pretty darn sure they're not there. And I will say, I know the only thing we have to do is pass on a scenario, you know, come to an agreement, pass on a scenario with a letter of approval from the, but within choosing that joint scenario, they're based on policies. And you've mentioned it, you know, one of the things you guys didn't look at was changes in transportation plans to have some of these same benefits, because the only thing you guys really looked at was policy drivers. And if we pass on a scenario, we're basically saying, we agree to these policies, that we think this is a good set of policies for the future. And I think that's a dangerous thing to do cavalierly. And I've already pointed out, there's issues with the economic studies behind this. I have difficulty agreeing to a scenario that embeds policy. I know it's not actually making a policy decision, but two years from now, people are going to be going, look, you guys approved that scenario, it said you were going to do X, Y, and Z, and you're not doing that now. You know, and it will become an issue in the future. So I have a little bit of difficulty with that. And I, you know, there are a couple, I could get into a bunch of little details, such as, you know, the survey respondents were 30% bike commuters, and we just heard that there's 6% bike commuters, this online survey respondents that actually developed scenarios, were so heavily bike commuters when there's less than 6% actually in MPO, there's 6% in Eugene. But I guarantee if you go to the full MPO, there's not that many out in Coburg or Springfield. And Lydia, you sell yourself short when you're saying, I'm the only one that would commute from Cottage Grove.
All right, I would do it.
Being the only one that really commutes daily on their bicycle. And I've gotten out of practice of commuting, seeing that I've gotten this crazy job that's gotten me off my bicycle more than on it. But, you know, there's, you know, the equity issue, I kind of wonder how closely that was studied in here, because one of the things I've seen, at least with current decisions in Lane Transit District, is the decision to move forward with MX and the associated increased operating cost for MX. I mean, it's a highly costly annual operating cost, MX, has actually caused them to close down local routes that access low-income people. You know, MX is being built on the back of neighborhood routes. So I don't know where the equity is in the MX system, you know, when it, the social equity side of that. For instance, there used to be a route that ran up territorial and into Clear Lake to go into and from Bonita. They no longer run that route, and now there's three mobile home parks of low-income people that no longer have access to mass transit along Clear Lake Road. So, you know, that's just some of the situations I see where, so in order to either outweigh that and continue the expansion of MX and the operating cost, there's going to have to, we get back to that payroll tax issue. Because the actual fare payers are not, are paying such a small percentage of the cost of operating that system. So I'd also kind of wonder about, you know, the other options, you know, we mentioned car sharing, but Uber hasn't been mentioned at all. And the changes in the whole dynamic of ride sharing and that system, and just what social media is doing to that. And in general, you know, what the, Commissioner Stewart mentioned, you know, how his kids interact nowadays, businesses interact similarly. I mean, there would be no way 20 years ago, I would be operating a magazine from a rural household, which is essentially what my wife does. But because of the internet and high-speed connections, you know, we've got a printer in Salem, we've got contributors all over the country, it's distributed worldwide, and we do it from El Myra. And it's because we have, you know, today's internet. And no one's really looking at that, you know, no one's driving in and out of town, you know? My wife walks to work. So, you know, those sort of changes in the economy with technology, I worry about. So I have a lot of concerns about the whole issue of us adopting one of these preferred scenarios because of the commitment to the policies embedded and because of my concerns about what wasn't looked at to resolve some of these issues and what was glossed over in the economics of it. So I'll just leave it at that as my comments. I don't know if you have any comments back, but...
Well, I don't have any comments back, but what I would like to have an understanding of is, are there pieces of information, as I suggested to Commissioner Stewart, I think we will discuss it at the project management team and have some information to report back when we come to you. The next time we're going to come to you, it will be to ask you to select the preferred scenario. So what I want clarity on is, are there additional pieces of information, or are there things that we can bring to you or provide for you or tasks that we can do so that when we come back before you, you will be more comfortable?
Yeah. Well, I think I agree with Commissioner Stewart that the impact on rural areas, when we get these metro-centric plans, sometimes have great impact. The West Eugene Parkway decision had extreme impact on West Lane County. You know, there's some more detailed information about the economics and how you guys develop your economic benefit. I mean, I see this quote, decrease in cost to households, but there's no trade-off on the increasing cost to business and increasing cost to taxation to support those policies. So, you know, if those, if at least the detail of the economics could be supplied so we can see whether there was opportunity cost taken into account and those trade-offs. But, you know, I'm not seeing it from what I've got here. So, you know, did the equity, did the equity piece look at the elimination of local bus routes? You know, did some of the push for transit look at the other? You know, one of the things about Uber is you get picked up where you want to get picked up and dropped off where you want to get dropped off, and mass transit doesn't do that. And how is Uber and some of that stuff going to compete with mass transit in the future? So, yeah.
I'd love to just touch on that last point about telecommuting and new areas of the sharing economy. And those are captured in the education and marketing piece, and they are really, really important strategies to making any of this work is increasing... important strategies to making any of this work, is increasing the ability of people to not commute or not commute all the time, and then using new technologies as ways to help us get around more efficiently. Those are really important and are embedded here. The other pieces that you've spoken about, I think our level of detail, we're really not at. So, I'm afraid we're going to come back, we'll do our best to come back to you with more information, but I'm afraid we're going to come back to you and say, you know, we didn't get to that level of detail.
Which is an answer in itself.
Yes, for sure.
And I guess the final thing I'll say on that, and of course, we'll discuss this when Kristen and I are back before you, but we want to select a preferred scenario, a post-select among the four agencies. But I think there are some ways that we can address some of the concerns that I'm hearing from the board, and it may be with some text addendums. So, while we may, if the board is comfortable with selecting a preferred scenario, you may say, we selected this, however, here are the caveats, or here are some things that we want to make sure that the legislature and any future people looking at this information are aware of.
Yeah, that may be helpful. Any other questions or comments on the scenario planning? Well, thank you for your patience with us. We kept you here a long time.
Thank you very much for having us.
And I think that finishes our morning agenda. If there's no objections, I'm going to recess the board until 1:30, and we'll see you after lunch.